I hope everyone had a nice Memorial Day weekend. Before we get to the agenda, I have asked the police chief to come over for about five minutes. You know, I hope everyone realizes how much I, along with this council, supports our police chief and our entire police department. And however, there's a little issue that I wanted the chief to make you all aware of. Chief, it's yours.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Mr. Stiles. Last weekend's arrest at the Oceanfront prompted a number of opinions and a number of information that has gone out to the public, and I think I need to clarify some of the actual fact pattern. Actually, there's been information prematurely put out that I need to respond to, and I'm going to take this opportunity to respond now to that misinformation. I really do not, you know, we work very hard in our city to have a good positive relationship with our community. And I don't want anything that's been prematurely put out or that you will see tonight on one of the TV stations that's going to damage the relationship we have with our citizens. We think our citizens are foremost in our thought, and our citizens really do support our police agency. There was a pilot article on Saturday, and one point at which the police union attorney and I totally agree, and I will quote that. "The amount of second guessing that goes on for people who make split-second decisions, it's not appropriate. We all hope clearer minds prevail, and the chief should never do anything other than what he thinks is right." So let me be very clear. I am doing what I think is right for the police department and for the citizens of our city. The fact is, the initial news report of the arrest showed only one video, and it was an excerpt from the chain of events that led up to that arrest. This is not the first case that merits such a review, and it won't be the last. Believe me, we will continue to review what we do. Reviews benefit everyone, police officers and the citizens. And when we get to uncover the final fact pattern, and then we come to the right conclusions, we won't have any second guessing whatsoever. A request from the Commonwealth attorney came to me the other day, and it initiated an investigation into the activities of the officers. You know, we do this because we investigate ourselves. We do this because we investigate ourselves even when we involve our own officers. It is what we do. It is who we are. It's the very essence of a civil police in a democratic society. It is what we are supposed to do. Many of our citizens expect that we're going to be transparent, that we're going to be open in all of our activities and in everything that we do, whether it be the Oceanfront, or whether it be Western Bayside, or our friends over in Green Run, or way out in Blackwater. It is what is, this is what has enabled us to maintain a positive and growing relationship with our community. Now, there's been some misinformation that's put out. No officer has been charged with anything. No officer has been suspended. Officers are put on what we call administrative assignment. It removes them from street duty for that period of time that we can investigate the case. This is done for a number of reasons. First and foremost, there's pressure that's put on an officer when we investigate a case. I know that because, at one time, I was a street officer. So we remove them from the day-to-day activity, put them in an assignment which gives them a little bit less stress than it would if they were still in a blue suit in a police This is common practice. Officers have been put on administrative assignment for a number of cases. As you know, we've had three officer-involved shootings during a three-week period, and I think the total number of officers that we've had on administrative assignment due to those cases was eight. And we do this routinely. Channel 10 contacted me today and said they received an anonymous report and spoke to some officers who said that they were going to do a slowdown. I want our citizens to know that our officers are first-rate. Our cops are the best in the state. You know, there was a public service announcement which was put out right before budget season? If you remember, it was on 790, the talk show radio? And it said that the crime rate has been the lowest it's been since 1963. And then it went on to say what a loaf of bread cost in 1963, and what a dozen eggs cost. And it said this didn't happen by accident. It happened because of the excellent work by the men and women of the Virginia Beach Police Department. That PSA, that well-done, professionally-done PSA was put out by our union. I stand by that comment. It's the everyday police officer who goes out, puts his life on the line, who does an excellent, fantastic job. We support them 100%. It's just times we need to look at ourselves. It's just times that we need to take a step back and say, was this appropriate? If not, how can we make it appropriate in the future? That's where we are today. We're still in the middle of this investigation, so all this misinformation that's been put out, I want it to clear. And I'll let you know as soon as we have a decision on this case, as well as some others, I'd be more than happy to come back and report to council.
Well, we certainly thank you for taking the time to come over here, chief. And I just want you all to be aware of what has occurred, and we're going to move on and know that we're behind you and our very fine police force.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on, sir.
All right. Mayor, we're going to, Andy Friedman from the Neighborhood Housing Office is going to come up and do a presentation along with Tim McCarthy on our strategic, give you an update on the strategic plan to end homelessness.
Well, I tell you, I'm looking forward to this presentation. And Andy and Tim, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About a year ago, city council, we asked city council, and you authorized the approval of the governing board of the Beach Community Partnership as kind of your official sounding board and input organization for homeless policy. And so Tim McCarthy is here with me as the chairman of that board, and Pam, I mean Karen Portillo is here as the housing development administrator of our department who's in charge of all homeless activities.
Karen, we're glad you're here, too.
We miss you.
And our first, so in 2013, this council adopted the strategic plan to end homelessness, which was also created in partnership with the Beach Community Partnership. The first goal of that plan was to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-reoccurring. In order to do that, we have to understand what homelessness is in Virginia Beach. We do an annual point-in-time count where we go out everywhere in the city and look for people who are homeless, both in shelters and on the street. And this year, we counted 423 people who are homeless. That included about 59 veterans. In the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, about 800 children, 825 children are members of households that had unstable housing or were homeless this year. And based on national understandings, about 1% of our population could experience an episode of homelessness any time during the year. Now, the good thing about that is most people resolve their homelessness themselves. The people who are of concern to the public organization, to the city government and federal government, are those who can't resolve it by themselves. We'd also like to recognize this council for all the things you have done to make this great work possible. So in 2011, you supported funding for Connection Point, which is the first step in our system improvements, which is a central call center that's now operated under contract by Samaritan House. You also approved rezoning for Cedar Grove Apartments, which is 32 apartments for homeless vets. In 2012, you authorized the purchase of land at 104 North Witch Duck, which is going to be the site of the Housing Resource Center. In 2013, you approved design funding for the Housing Resource Center and rezoning for Crescent Square Apartments, which is going to provide 40 new units of permanent housing for previously homeless people. In 2014, you authorized funding to continue the Oceanfront Outreach Initiative. And this year, you've approved funding for the Housing Resource Center construction, which is $30 million, as well as another $1 million in combined funding of federal, state, and city funds to support the overall operation of homeless services in our city. So Tim and I both want to recognize that you, as the council, make this work possible. This is the plan to end homelessness that you adopted, and we're going to go through a few of the accomplishments related to it. First one was increased leadership, innovation, collaboration, innovation, and civic engagement. And those pictures that you saw were some of the activities that we've engaged in that show leadership. This is our Housing Resource Center public briefing that occurred in May 2014. We had input from the entire community about what it should be, what the design should be like. We've also continued the Beach Community Partnership and the Continuum of Care, which is a true community resource organization composed of faith-based nonprofit city and federal and state organizations all working together. We, that organization, both makes community-wide funding decisions and advises our department and you, the council, on what to do about homelessness. I want to point out that since 2005, we've been active participants in the regional task force to end homelessness, in which we've been very successful in creating regional housing opportunities and advancing the cause of ending homelessness when it's appropriate to do so regionally. Not everything needs to be done regionally, but we've made a lot of progress on that front as well. We also wanted, our second goal of the strategic plan was to create a collaborative system of service delivery. That is, how do we get people from homelessness into housing? Some of the things we've done under achieving that goal include the following. The Oceanfront Initiative, which you approved, and we started on our own with the Departments of Police and Human Services. We engaged over 1,000 people through that initiative, and several significant numbers have gotten referred to housing, to shelter, or to, back to safe, a safe place to be. We have a family shelter program that our churches have initiated on their own. It's modeled on the winter shelter program, and churches are now housing families during the summer for periods of time so that they can get referred to housing and be safe in that process. We conduct our annual point-in-time count, which is an important part of getting an accurate picture of homelessness. And this year, we had 60-plus volunteers participating in that account. We also want to point out the accomplishments of our faith-based organizations who work both on their own and together with us. Charity Tracker is a software program that was developed and is now used in Virginia Beach to coordinate assistance from churches and, who help people who are homeless and in need. They track the assistance they give, and they've given, since they started using this system, they've identified over $1 million in assistance from the faith organizations alone to end, to help people who are either homeless or about to become homeless. And that system is, we're working to integrate that system with the nonprofit and city system so we can help as many people as possible, whether they're actually homeless or in need of preventing homelessness. We are also part of a regional and state and federal effort to end veteran homelessness by the end of this year. Tim's going to give you some numbers about that later, but that's another leadership and collaboration initiative that is very, very likely to bring us to a virtual end to veteran homelessness, which means any vet who's found homeless would be referred to housing within 60 days. We've also identified additional city resources that we can put towards ending homelessness. Our third goal was to increase and maintain affordable housing. This is a picture of some senior housing that will be built in Burton Station neighborhood. We also have the Crescent Square Apartments, which you've approved, which will be opening this December, as 40 new units of housing for the homeless, as well as 40 units for affordable efficiency apartments. We've opened Cedar Grove Apartments, which is Virginia Beach Community Development's development of 32 units for veterans. So we're moving forward on that. We also have always wanted our system to have, be sustainable, both at the city cost and to bring in private funding. Mayor Sessons has led a group that's working to develop private funding to support our activities. We've had meetings with community leaders, and we've had several, several events where we've supported the work of the Housing Resource Center. Two luncheons was highlighted at the State of the City address. And the next step will be the formation of a nonprofit organization that's going to actually lead an effort to raise money for the Housing Resource Center, as well as the activities that happen in there. Another piece of sustainable resources is using money in the best possible way, collaborating with all the actors out there so that we do those things together that are best done together, as well as making sure that we have community buy-in, and we do that through the Beach Community Partnership, where we have representatives of city, nonprofit, and faith organizations at the table. One of the things that we think is really important is what you did and sanctioned the Beach Governing Board. And I just listed who's on there. We have funded agencies. We also have the schools at the table. We also have the regional task force at the table. And we do have two consumers of homeless services, people who are formerly homeless, who have the experience to give us to make sure we stay on track in assisting people in the right way. We've also implemented something that's really important, which is coordinated assessment. That means every person who presents needing services gets the same assessment and the same evaluation of what their needs are. They get a fast referral to available resources, and no one gets special treatment. Everyone gets good treatment and an assessment of what they need. We also have some related successes through the Charity Tracker software program that I mentioned. And some of you will recall that we had this incredible cold weather, and several residents of Mobile Home Park, of a Mobile Home Park, had pipes that froze, and basically, they were about to be homeless because they didn't have water, water in their trailers, and they couldn't afford to make the repairs. Through the Charity Tracker system and our staff referral, 36 of those households got private assistance to pay the plumbers, to fix their pipes, and avoided becoming homeless. So preventing homelessness is really just as important.
That's spectacular.
Yeah, that was a great effort. Really.
That's spectacular.
We also want you to know that we have 35% architectural plans completed for the Housing Resource Center. With your approval of the funding for construction, we will have those plans completed and put out to bid. And I want you to know that we've had public input opportunities on that project in 2012, 2013, and 2014, and we think we're pretty solid in your support and the public support of it. So I'm going to, we also just give you an update on the fundraising nonprofit that's in the process of being created. These people have, have agreed to become members of the board and be part of the effort to raise funds. We're working to get that finalized, and they'll move forward on that effort very shortly. I'm going to turn this next two slides over to Tim to talk about how all the pieces of this effort fit together and what's next on our agenda.
Tim, we're glad to have you with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. It's a privilege to be here. Andy and I were talking a little beforehand and realized that we've been working together on the housing issues for more than 25 years here in this community, and we know so many of you have done that as well. And as Chief Severa said, we have the best police force in the state. I think we have the best housing and neighborhood preservation operation and department in the state as well, and in the best city in the, in the country, at least if not beyond the world. What I'd like to do is just talk to you briefly about the importance of the integration that goes on and continually goes on. And there's a lot of very hard work that goes on to maintain that synergy and movement forward. I'd also like to say that it's not only the staff that brings passion and integrity to this, but it's members from other departments as well as from the community. And it's that mix that makes this a vital movement forward in addressing this very important issue in our community, and that is homelessness. So the lead agency, as you know, is the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation. And they have been the lead agency for our city since its beginning, and they also help to coordinate and make sure that we work with HUD in terms of all the regulations that are there, and become the funnel through which the funds are made available to many agencies in the community and primarily directed at ending homelessness in our community. In addition to that, we also, as you know, a number of years ago, had a very large turnout and started the Beach Community Partnership. Beach meaning bringing an end to all city homelessness. It brought great energy to the table, and we have flexed over time and had to kind of zero in and do a hybrid of that, informing the governing committee, which was necessary in order to meet the HUD requirements. But we did that, and at the very same time, maintained that partnership. So we have regular meetings of the partnership as well as the governing board. And there are dialogues that are going on all the time with folks at the, at those tables. And I must also let you know that we're very pleased to also have the other departments within the city. So there isn't a governing board, meaning that we don't have the police department represented. There isn't a partnership meeting without representation from the city libraries, from the public school system, and, and also from human services. And it's vital that we keep those connections and work together in unison. And then, as Andy said, the creation of the not-yet-named, but soon-to-be-named nonprofit to make it sustainable into the future in terms of the funding for the Housing Resource Center, that's well underway. Ray Bjorkman, the pastor, is the lead person from the governing board who serves on that. And then, last but not least, you know, we couldn't accomplish this, as Andy said, without the help of city council and your leadership in making this happen over many years in terms of directing your energies and providing us with the resources and the incentive to move forward in, in addressing the issue of homelessness. So as we look at what's next, and these are a few things that Andy has mentioned, but just to reiterate in summary, what we've recognized is that we need to continue to focus on homelessness, but also focus on those people who are on the edge of falling into homelessness, you know, so those who are at risk. So it's not just the chronic population or the population that we see, you know, directly in front of us, but it's also those families and individuals and, you know, as identified, all those children in the public school system who are at risk for more chronic homelessness into the future. So that's one of our focuses. And I'm very happy to report, because it's an exciting story, and that is what we've been able to do with this push to end veterans homelessness. So in the past 200 days, more than 139 veterans have been permanently housed in our region. And of that number, 63 have been from Virginia Beach and have been permanently housed. In addition, there are another 23 that have already been matched for housing. So this concerted effort to make sure that we address the veterans in our community who happen to find themselves in a position of homelessness, we're making a huge dent and continue to press on every day, both in our community and regionally, to address that issue. So I think that's to be celebrated, and it wouldn't happen without the coordination of folks and without, you know, everyone helping to make that happen in our community. And then next, you know, the decision that you made some time ago, but it was a courageous decision, and that was to create 80 units of housing in the North Hampton Boulevard area, and that will open in the winter of 2015. So 40 of the units will be for homeless, you know, so that just provides for an additional stock. Some of those will be veterans who will move in there. But then there's also 40 units that will be efficiency apartments for those people who are on the edge and, and in the lower-income category. Not, they don't have to be homeless, but they will be provided housing opportunities there. And then, as we all know, the implementation and full operation plan for the Housing Resource Center, you know, that's to be celebrated. That will come available in 2017, and we're doing everything that we can to coordinate all of those agencies that will partake in the service delivery at that center, to include the Health Department as well. That's one I didn't mention before, and the Health Department is always at the table as well. We know that the area that the Housing Resource Center falls in is recognized in zoning as an industrial area, so the zoning needs to be changed, and that will happen, I think, in September and then come before you again. So thank you for your initiatives. Thank you for the energy that you bring to this. Thank you for the opportunity to be in partnership with you. And I think it's a great story for all of us to tell and to let people know that we're making a huge dent in addressing this issue of homelessness in our city. So thank you.
Tim, we thank you and Andy. I know I speak for the entire council. We've come a long way.
We have.
And, you know, that's what's exciting. And, you know, again, the takeaway of, you know, the end of this year, if we don't have a veteran in Virginia Beach that's homeless, that's quite an accomplishment. I think they're trying to do that across the Commonwealth, from what I'm hearing. But that would be huge. And, you know, when those pipes burst, I'm still amazed that y'all got, you know, private money to get those fixed, and that's just spectacular, no other way to put it. Questions or comments from council members, please? Yes, ma'am.
When you mentioned how many years it's been that this has been an issue, I just think back to the people who have been standing for the council all these years.
Churches.
Asking the council to do these things. So, you know, the council, thank you for giving us the credit, but it was really all of these committed people who have been making this happen and coming to the council and then providing us with the opportunity. And, you know, these have been volunteers all along the way. And we just have such committed people, and I think that's where the, that's where the credit really needs to be.
Let me give evidence to, because we don't need to lose sight of, running the winter shelter every year for 20 years, and all of those faith communities that step forward, you know, to prepare all those meals, to make everyone feel at home, you know, to become a part of our caring community for that population. It's extraordinary. And for any of us who have lived here this past year, it was probably the coldest winter that I can remember. And just to think that that many faith communities were out there and providing that service. And last year, what they decided to do is that they were going to also join together as churches to provide a place for families. You know, so there were a number of families that were provided a home for a whole week to bring them and their children to, and it was the largesse and the caring of those communities that made that difference. And that's kind of the groundswell. That's the passion and the, and the energy behind all the efforts that we make.
And one thing, Tim, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's something I think I'm feeling and hearing pretty clearly. With the new facility, please understand the volunteers are very excited about it and being a part of it, and, you know, believing the results will be greater and better.
Absolutely.
And so we're not giving up on those volunteers, you know, and they don't want to give up either. They really want to make a difference, and we're very blessed, and we thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. And I've made a mistake not to let you all know that Dr. Amelia Ross-Hammon is traveling for the university today, and has, which will not be at the meeting. I apologize for not saying that at the beginning of the meeting. Let's go to enter our financial statements. Patty, we welcome you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Aaron McCoy, who's put together quite a bit of this material.
Aaron, we're glad to have you.
Going to be assisting us here. And you should have received in your package, you know, the full material, and we're going to go over... Which way do I do this?
Yeah, we got a technical difficulty.
Yeah, I need a tuxedo.
Forward it from back there.
Got it. We're going to focus on general fund revenues and expenditures, and go ahead. And this is the, the short version here. We have collected $588.3 million, and we have spent $870.1. We spent more than we've collected, as we usually do this time of year. Just wanted to point out, we have a billion, $12.1 million revenue budget and a billion, $67.8 million expenditure budget, the difference in the two numbers coming from fund balance. This next chart is our little flattened S-curve here. But basically, this is showing that our average, our trend line, is 58.3% of our budget collected by now, and we're a little behind. We're at 58.1. Go ahead, Aaron. We still need to collect 41.9%. We still need to collect 41.9%, but the point is, we have actually collected 18.2 million more than we collected this time last year, but as a percentage of the budget, we are off two-tenths of a percent. And the story I want to tell, if you look at this last bullet, is that the revenue budget probably won't be achieved. It'll be 3 to 5 million under budget by the end of the year, we're projecting, we're expecting. But I wanted to point out that real estate revenue is expected to be several million over. Personal property, a budget, this is the local portion now, not the state portion, at 83.8 million is expected to be exceeded as well significantly. And you might remember, that's a revenue that kind of goes up and down. There is a couple revenue sources that I'm going to get into that will be under budget. There's still going to be revenues greater than we had received in the prior year, but the budget was a little more aggressive, and so that budget will not be achieved. So overall, we will be slightly under budget, but just a fraction, but that translates to several million. Now, as we always do, we're going to go over some of the major revenues, and just as a reminder, the dark blue line is what we actually got on the fiscal year and the prior years. The light blue is year-to-date actual, the yellow is the current-year budget, and the real estate revenue is expected to be exceeded by a slight amount, maybe as much as a million, between a half and 1 million. Personal property, and as I alluded to earlier, just looking at this red trend line, it just is not, it's not as easy to predict as it is in real estate. The yellow line, budget this year of 83.7 million, will be exceeded, we think, by as much as 5 million.
And last year, we didn't meet budget in that.
We have not made budget on this item for the past two years.
I didn't think so, yeah.
And if you look at the light blue, you can kind of tell the story there, where we are at this point. Now, the bills went out, and we expect that those payments will be coming, well, they're coming in now. Let's see if I got anything here. The, but the actual billing, the net levy that got mailed out about a month ago is 17.8% greater than it was last year.
Wow.
So this item will be, could be a little over 5 million in terms of excess revenue.
I would suspect, if you asked him, he would tell you the average age of the cars went down as a consequence. I think there was a lot more new vehicle purchases, and new purchases outside the area, because you would buy a car cheaper outside Hampton Roads than you came in, and your local retailing numbers really understate the number of new car purchases made that are actually registered here, because people are buying them out of the region for the price differential. That's a much bigger activity than you would think.
You're telling me that our car dealers will let someone go somewhere else and buy a car?
I've had that personal experience myself.
I thought they were much more successful in that now.
I personally experienced.
Okay.
I haven't, just, there's a lot of things that sometimes you don't see in data when you go and look.
Right. Aaron, general sales tax, dark blue, see, this revenue item's done fairly well over the years, and our actual collections through April is pretty good. It's greater than last year, what, 900,000 or 1.1 million greater than last year. But the budget is fairly aggressive, and so we project that this revenue, while will be greater than last year, will be 1 and 1/2 to 2 million less than budget. Utility taxes, I believe that most of this issue is going to be, is timing because of the way utility tax work, but it probably will be just a hair under budget. Telecommunications, we continue to see that. The budget was very aggressive, especially when you compare it to what we actually collected last year. So the actual collections is roughly 200,000 less than last year, so this will be under budget between 1 and 2 million. Business license, we've collected, at this point, exactly what we've collected last year. Last year was a good year, but you'll see the aggressive budget, so we will be under budget by 3 to 4 million. Now, on a brighter note, the hotel room tax is doing very well, continues to perform well, 4.1% up from the prior year, and this...
Looking at it this weekend, this should continue.
Oh, my gosh.
Unbelievable.
Great start.
Couldn't have had the better weather.
This chart shows just the general fund portion, which is 2% of the total 8%. And now, Aaron, this is the total hotel room tax, and of course, it's 4.2% because this includes the dollar a room night and so forth, but a good trend, and we think that this will meet or exceed budget. We don't think it'll be significantly over if it does go over, but it's, should make budget.
This is something I speak about everywhere I go, is how we've been so blessed in the hotel tax and the restaurant tax since the heat, the depth of the Depression.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, we've been very fortunate.
It's played well with the rating agencies, which, by the way, I've had two conference calls this morning with the rating agencies in preparation for the sale on June 10th. And so, I've done this thing twice already today, this briefing, because I did the same for them, but they are always impressed with the conservatism in budgeting and the way we manage this and the way things continue to perform during the recession.
I would suggest, and I know you're looking and see about prices and what really is happening on a transactional level, but I would also suggest, since we have, like, the second-highest meal tax in the United States, only behind Norfolk.
You'll find that not, it blew my mind, they're like, if we were looking, I think even with that report they would get, I think it's 2% higher, like in Newport News. I mean, it's outrageously high compared to ours.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Right, and this is my point, though. Since many people's lifestyle, independent outcome, just because of how their activity are forced to eat out more than they would like, even if you buy shrimp at Farm Fresh when it's free to have it steamed, you get charged a sales tax, food tax here than you don't in Arlington, Virginia, because I bought at both places and it's taxed differently. But I've asked a question about that to General Assembly, but why we're inconsistent. But the point being is, it has a regressive impact on low-income people, because that's a huge impact on their income. And you could say, well, they have the choice not to eat out, but in reality, in many cases, I could see this for people, single parents, they're trying to get the kids, trying to get homework, they're out there buying that patisserie chicken at BJ for 5 bucks or whatever, but then they're paying 11 and 1/2% sales tax. So there is, there is a side to that that's not, there's a sharp edge to those numbers.
And I respect what you just said, but by recollection, a number of years ago, when we've raised the restaurant tax, it was extremely high in comparison to some neighboring cities. We have not done anything with that tax, and as I recall, our neighboring cities and other cities in the Commonwealth are considerably higher, I mean, like 7 and 1/2% and so forth. John, did you want to say something?
Why, we've had a lot of discussions, because it really is interesting to try and break this out so that you can really get an accurate picture of it. But, you know, I would venture to say that when you go back to the chart that says hotel tax, that people that are in distressed incomes that Mr. Moss refers to are not the ones that are accounting for the increase in the hotel tax. And if you look at the general rate increase from year over year between the two and compare the graphs to one another, you'll see that they're very comparable. So, I mean, to sit and say that all of the increases are based solely on folks that are local and living on limited budgets and having to eat out more out of necessity is probably not an accurate picture either.
Well, I don't know if it's accurate, I'm just saying, it is an edge to that tax. And I think when you look at the other thing about sales tax, I think you will see that as people's fixed costs have gone up, counting the fees and stuff that we give them, people's discretionary income for discretionary purchases have fallen, and I believe you would see some correlation between the decline in real family purchasing power and the offset and the variance between the sales tax we collected. It certainly shows up at the state level, and it certainly showed up in Fairfax County, where they had the first median family income drop in 20 years. They saw a drop in their sales tax revenue. I think there's a correlation.
The Ad Committee has discussed this a couple times, and they're not sure that people are eating out more, even though the tax is going up, and they're concerned that maybe it's because of, like, buying Whole Foods food, you know, prepared foods and Whole, and the food, prepared foods in other places. Is there a way that we can break out the restaurant, the actual restaurant tax versus prepared foods, like from grocery stores?
From a grocery store, yeah. We'll look into it, you know, that would be interesting.
They've been asking that question.
Good point.
And the price of food is, I think, a little higher as well, in general.
Substandard.
At the restaurants.
That might be an interesting, there's information, not only to them, but, you know, for us too, is how many are actually going to restaurants and eating out as to buying prepared foods?
We'll take a look.
All right, didn't mean to interrupt you on that one, that was my fault.
That's okay. But the restaurant meal tax, the general fund portion as well as the citywide, is up 5.1%. So we do expect this to meet or exceed budget. And go ahead to the next one. The total restaurant meal tax, and we just put this little chart here to show you where, remind you where it all goes. It's a significant budget source, almost $60 million, but that should meet or exceed budget slightly. This is just the recap, it's not meant to, if you can read it, but I just highlighted the two items that we consider is going to beat excessive budget, because we know, based on what we see today, will exceed budget. And we put in red the two major items we think will be below budget. And just for council's information, there'll be some little pluses or minuses in these smaller revenue items, and just, you know, as we said earlier, we think it'll be between 3 and 5 million overall, under budget. And as we get closer, when we come back to you next month, we hopefully, we can predict it a little bit more closely. Okay, switching now to expenditures, the good news is that our trend line, our dark blue line, we are two full percentage points less in terms of expenses than we typically are this time of year. So, Aaron, just to kind of remind council that usually, all of this section here will be spent in total, because their transfers are going to go to other funds. Salary expenditures and operating are where we see our savings, and we, I hate to go on record too soon and too early, but we do see significant savings going on here, anywhere from 22 or more million dollars. Go to the next one. This is, we started this, I think someone we know likes the little charts here.
Yeah, where'd that be, Jim?
Little dashboard. But we're going to be just a little less on our revenue side, and we're going to be significantly under on our expenditure side. And as I said in the letter to council, taking into account the money we've appropriated out of fund balance, or projected fund balance for FY '16 capital needs and so forth, we expect it will be within City Council policy level, not significantly more, but within that policy level. So just as a reminder, we're back in about a month, and we will officially close the books August 15th, and we'll do all our accruals and so forth, have unaudits sometime in October, and the audited CAFER in December.
Patty, we thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir.
About the city business licenses, is there any way to categorize where that delta in revenues is, as insights, economic development, or other insights yields as to what's happening in the city, like what business categories that licensing reduction in revenues took place in?
Well, remember, we're going to be about where we were last year, so it's not really a reduction, we're just not going to make budget.
Right, but anyway, but for the part where we don't make the budget, there was anticipation, so somewhere in those categories of business, we didn't get what we think. I'm just asking, what insight and knowledge does that yield?
I'll see what I can find out for you.
And starting next year, since now we have this number from the budget question, and we know these 270 positions that we have, a number which have been vacant for sometimes more than a year, it would be nice to have a, here's the total number of FTEs in the budget, and in every given, literally when we get this report, how many of those do we have at that reporting period, average for whatever the month or the day, and then some kind of breakout, how many are more than two years old, ones more than five, but just what's the age of those vacancies? Because that's the bulk of the revenue savings out of the salary and benefits line, and I think we just need to see, you know, why do we have the variances, and what are we, and how long has it been vacant? I hope that position that was five years old's been reapplied, I hope.
I'm sure it has, by now.
I'd like to know where. That's a question.
I'd also like to know, if we're going to do that, what the difference in a AAA bond rating versus AA would be, you know, as far as on our debt.
I know the school board does lapse employment.
Right.
Respect your comment, I'm just saying, there's another side to look at that.
Well, as you know, and I know I say this every month, but we use that savings to cash fund the capital projects. For FY '16, about 88 million dollars is either coming out of cash out of fund balance or cash out of operations towards a capital plan of 312 million for FY '16, and that's not, that's a significant amount that helps give the agencies and investors comfort that we're not, that we're not over-leveraged with our debt.
Like our families are.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
Another good discussion, Mr. Moss.
Always.
Okay, our wonderful planning department. Shaq, Karen, and Stephen, we're glad to have you all here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, pleasure to be here. Batting cleanup again. This will be a mercifully short at-bat this month, because we only have eight items spread unequally between June 2nd and June 16th. Rose Hall and Centerville are off the hook in June, and the theme this month will be nonconformities. In June, you will see the last two non-conforming use modifications or expansions that will not, that aren't accompanied by a recommendation from the Planning Commission. As you know, they will now, under ordinance, be required to go through that process, which will, among other things, afford the communities in which these nonconformities occur twice the opportunity for a comment on them. Let's begin with June 2nd. Bayside and Beach District, you've heard the first item, Thomas and Joan Eckert, which was deferred by the council. This is off of Shore Drive, this is two changes of zoning on the Old Bay Lake Pine School site, one on the majority of the property shown there in the large, yellow-defined area, from R 7.5 to PDH 2, and the smaller square there at the corner, from R 7.5 to conditional B1A.
Has that been worked out with the community yet?
Supposedly, yes.
Yes.
Good deal.
There have been conversations occurring which have caused the applicant to modify the site plan a little bit. This is, the school, of course, is located, the site is the Old Bay Lake Pine School and the athletic fields adjoining Lake Joyce, a 6.55-acre PDH 2 area, which will be developed with 30 detached single-family units and a condominium configuration of ownership and a somewhat less than one-acre site, zoned commercial for a medical office building. Council deferred this on May 5th, as you recall. The applicant has subsequently revised its site plan and proffers which respond to the requests of the Planning Commission and the concerns of the residents nearby. That modification will result in the reduction by one unit of the plan that was previously submitted, and they also have submitted building plans for sheds that will be used in the community. You will see, well, those are elevations. Staff has worked substantially... Staff has worked substantially with the applicant to revise the site plan, and there are features about it now, which we think are very commendable and address the neighboring communities' concerns. As a result, the staff had recommended approval, and by a vote of seven to two, the Planning Commission did as well. There was opposition. Moving on to the Beach District, Jeffrey and Suzanne Bright, this is the first of two nonconforming uses that I talked about a bit earlier on Linkhorn Drive. Site is an R 40 residential lot. It's accompanied by a single-family house, garage apartment, and in a pool house as an accessory. It was built in 1921, way long before the zoning ordinance was a glimmer in anyone's eyes around here, and since two residential structures are not permitted on one lot in this district, it's therefore nonconforming in status. What the applicant wants to do is add a second floor to the garage structure and connect that structure with the pool house next door. Since it's nonconforming, the enlargement of the use can only be allowed upon your approval. Again, this is the last one that operated, or next to the last one, that came in under the old process, so there's no staff recommendation, but we'll provide one to you prior to June 2nd. And again, also, no recommendation from the Planning Commission. Moving on to June 16th, starting in Kempsville, Checker Flag Store Number Two, this is one of their stores known that you will recognize as the BMW dealership. They're asking for modification of conditions and proffers in order to enlarge the showroom, moving it basically a little bit further towards the boulevard and increasing the aesthetic appeal of that building without reducing or interfering with the relatively nice front aesthetics that currently exist on the property. Be very similar in style to what we know of there currently, and you had request, or you had approved a related request last year for a portion of the western site, which is their Toyota dealership. Staff had recommended approval with conditions. Planning Commission placed it on the consent agenda, and there was no opposition. Moving over to Lynn Haven, it's the old Duck Insight, Gray Star GP 2 LLC. This is basically the same project that you had approved before, however, what they would like to do is change a portion of the project to conditional use for seniors and disabled persons on a portion of the slightly less than five acre site, 171 units, you see depicted there. These will be independent units, and the provisions of the zoning ordinance related to housing for seniors restrict the occupants to those at least 62 years of age or older and family members of the caregivers. The apartments will be located within two five-story buildings with parking on the ground floor and four stories of dwelling units and amenities above that. Staff has recommended approval with attached conditions. Planning Commission put that on their consent agenda, and there was no opposition to this change. There's nothing really on the site that, plan that was approved that will change as part of this, it's simply a ownership and conditions for elderly and disabled tenants. Lynn Haven, King's Grant Baptist Church off of Little Neck Road, they would like to operate a use permit to operate an open-air market, something that's becoming very popular around the city, a farmer's market type use that will be open two days of the month, on Thursdays, from 4:00 to 7:00 in the evening, through, from June through September. Seven vendors and five food trucks will be part of that activity, and they will be located in the red hashed bar to the left of the screen. They will have children's activities and information tables distributing information With Mr. Wood's concurrence, this will be expedited from the Planning Commission meeting to the, to the council meeting, so therefore, there's no Planning Commission recommendation at this time.
So, this one is on the June?
June 10th.
June 10th planning.
Planning Commission, yes, ma'am. Moving down to Princess Anne, McHugh Builders, you're familiar with this one, off of Damneck Road. This is a nonconforming use again. What they would like to do, you had, you had, I won't spend a lot of time on this one, because you've heard it before and indefinitely deferred it. The applicant has asked for it to come back for your consideration. It's zoned agricultural with 12 units existing on the property. They were constructed, again, in the early 1950s, prior to the zoning ordinance, again. They plan to replace those existing aging units with 12 new ones, according to that site plan you see there. They will also be making other improvements to the property as part of the request. Staff had recommended approval, as you recall, again, since it hadn't been to the Planning Commission so far, there's no recommendation from them, and the, there have been no other changes in the submitted plans since the deferral on April 7th.
We had a rather extensive staff meeting after the council meeting to look at this, and I think staff raised a lot of concerns and asked the developer to meet with staff, particularly Public Works and Public Utilities, have they done that, and are there any changes? I think a major concern of this is it's going to be a condo association.
What?
A condo association. Did they meet with the staff and try to work anything out?
It's-
They did meet. So, they just had a proceed?
There's no, there's no changes.
Yeah, they did.
It's the same plan you've seen before.
So, since that's a private road, all the utilities under the road and all stuff would be owned by the condo association.
Yes, sir.
Responsible for the trash pickup.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand the concern, Barbara, very much.
Great concern of mine.
Financial viability.
Moving along, this one's a real easy one. This is a ordinance adoption to adopt the, by reference, the Green Sea Blue Way and Greenway Management Plan that you were briefed on earlier into the comprehensive plan. I won't spend much time on that, since you've got a very extended briefing from Clay Burnick on this. It's a long-term strategy for basically the North Landing River watershed, and is, I believe, a fine example of regional cooperation to address a very special resource system.
Always looking for it.
In, in our area. Not only Virginia jurisdictions, but those in North Carolina, too, that's a relatively unique process that we've been involved in. So, we obviously are recommending adoption. Planning Commission by consent agreed with that, and there was no opposition. And lastly, there's an ordinance amendment to Section 801 of the zoning ordinance to allow veterinary establishments as permitted uses in the office districts. This is in response to a new type of medical, veterinarian, medical establishment that is getting more and more common, specialized treatment.
Like the chiropractor.
Right. Times four or something.
I went to an oncologist over in Chesapeake in an office building, and I, I've been there.
With a dog?
Yes, with my dog, but-
It doesn't include-
Well, unfortunately.
Well, maybe this place can help you at, at some point.
That'd be really good now.
You might get a treat as part of the-
Where could we go?
Oh, Lord.
It's will look like a traditional veterinary office, no overnight stays, and because they are not currently allowed in the O 1 and O 2 district, this will, will eliminate that restriction. Again, I think due to Mr. Wood's interest in this, this is being expedited to the June 10th, from the June 10th Planning Commission meeting to you, therefore, we don't have anything from the Planning Commission to represent. And that will take us through June.
All right, any questions or comments? Jack, we thank you all very much, and council, I thank you all for your attendance, and-
We'll adjourn.
Bobby, nice.
Bye.
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 Bye.